I can't get this up here.
It doesn't show though. It doesn't show though.
Where's your email?
There it is.
Are you ready?
Yeah, we are.
He's just trying to... Should it be... So I hit it here?
Use document camera and should bring that one down.
Oh, that's what happened. Yeah.
The PC is on here. It's red.
Yeah, he's making sure it's working.
There it is. Yep. Just delay until next day.
If you want to go ahead and hit the...
Go on. Okay. We'll call the December 1st meeting of City Council to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Gallups?
Here.
Holst?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
Shobloom?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson is absent.
Pledge of allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, at least it's not too bad out tonight. We'll have approval of agenda.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's one and two. Okay, we'll have public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name, address, for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Well, I know it's hard for you.
My name is Babel Born Hope. I live at... On Michael Avenue in Douglas Township. For those of you that do not know me... Yes? For those of you that do not know me... I was born and raised here. I moved out of town 2002. I spent almost fifty years as a resident here. I own my own construction company, have for forty years. And we work. Put it very simply, we work hard. And I think anybody that knows me knows that. The Public Works Crew that you have today is the best one I've ever seen. And I've seen a lot of them. And I know what's going on. I know work. I understand work. It was very sad I was in the Public Works meeting tonight. When that man right there accused his own crew, the crew I'm talking about, of lying. Now, I take offense to that, and I hope you people do too. And furthermore, I hope that you look into what the hell is going on around here, because I know, and I ain't very happy about it. And it's your job to do something about it. And I expect you'll do it. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else is here, we'll go on. Presentations. The main.
It's all yours, Justin.
Justin.
Yeah, I don't know why. I've switched to a different input system and it worked. Put the other one back on. Way you go. More about a day at the Cannon Falls Library.
What do I do? Just tap this to...
Yeah, you essentially can just use the arrow keys or you can tap on the screen.
Got it. Well, I just have to say it and get it out of my system. We check out books at the library. And I say that somewhat to be funny. But there's a lot of articles and stuff going around about what do public libraries look like? Where are public libraries going? What do we do? How do we present ourselves? But the fact of the matter is, we've been checking out books for probably centuries. And we're still checking out books. And we're going to continue to check out books. At least throughout my lifetime. So, all this stuff about, well, what's this library doing? What's this library doing? In Cannon Falls, majority of our patrons, they're there to check out books. So what we're going to do tonight is sort of walk through, what does that look like? What does a library look like on a daily basis? Well, to begin with, when you start your day out, you usually want to have a general idea of what you're going to do. Our mission statement is, "The Cannon Falls Library promotes the communication of ideas, the enlightenment of our citizens, and the enrichment of our personal lives." Pretty big mission statement for a little library in a small town. But each day, we try to engage the citizens of Cannon Falls and those outside of Cannon Falls in those ideas. Those communication with each other, broadening their horizons and enriching their own lives through their public library. What does that look like? In the morning, we don't open till ten. We've got a lot of stuff to do. Overnight, people drop their books off in the book drop. Some of them because they might be late and they think they can sneak them through without getting fined. Others, because it's just convenient. We're not always open. You know, some people don't get back to Cannon Falls until after seven o'clock at night. So it's a convenient way to drop your books off. Also, we're part of a greater library region called Selco Region. I won't go too much into that. But in that, we have what's called interlibrary loan with other libraries. And a lot of, majority of what we do is with, in libraries within southeastern Minnesota, but we can reach out to greater Minnesota. That's what this ILL stuff is. So in the month of October, Cannon Falls residents, our library patrons, borrowed 672 books from other libraries. Our library being a small library, we loaned out 321 books. Now, those books have to get checked in. They have to get processed. They have to get pulled off our shelves and sent on to other libraries. And then the libraries that are sending materials to us, we have to check those in, get those on hold, and on the hold shelf for the library patrons that are looking for those materials. So, it may look like a small library, but when you think about the greater picture of southeastern Minnesota, you've got a huge collection to choose from. So pretty much, almost any book that you're looking for, we can get. And if not, we'll try really hard to find it for you. There are some difficult books out there. I'm not going into that. That gets a little complicated. It's kind of fun to deal with, though. And find those books and get them in, even if they're not in the state of Minnesota. We get them throughout the United States. We find a library that has it. We try to borrow it. And if not, if it's of general interest to the public, we purchase it for our residents. So that they're getting the materials that they're asking for. What happens when we open? Well, we're open forty-five public service hours a week. In the month of October, we circulated around thirteen thousand items. So that means checking in, checking the items out. So if you think about it, for a little town with about four thousand people, checking out that many books, you've probably got about one or two books per citizen. Now, not everyone participates in the library. But it's a large amount. And when you sort of break it down into a daily, I thought it was kind of interesting, and I was talking with my staff about this, that's about sixty-nine items an hour. So, you know, that's pretty fast checking out. And of course, it never works out that we just slowly check out one book a minute. It's usually lunch rush, so we're checking out multiple books all at once. And then on top of that, it's not just about checking out books. Not everyone is capable or has easy access to a computer, to an up-to-date computer, to fast internet service. I know y'all have been dealing with this with MediaCom and all of that good stuff. It's not always working. Your printer goes down at home. You've got to print out something for a document. The library is there for that. And then we have those who have their own unique devices. You know, your iPhones, your cell phones, and all of this stuff. And you know how much you pay for data and all of that stuff when you need it. Well, the library has free Wi-Fi access, and we usually get about 225 people a month using that. So that's sort of the upfront public end of a lot of what we do, is processing those books, getting those books in the right hands, getting those materials into who needs it, providing internet access, Wi-Fi access. And then we get into sort of the meat and bones a little behind the scenes. We usually catalog around seventy-five new materials a month. Doesn't sound like a lot. But let's think about this. You're at home, you're on Amazon, you are Barnes &amp; Noble or whatever book company you want. You order your book, it comes to your door. You pick up your book, you read it, you put it on the shelf. Guess what? That doesn't work in a public forum. We can't just order that book, put it on the shelf, let people take it out of the library, and bring it back. Sometimes it may get brought back, it may not. So we have to catalog these materials. We have to get them in the system, so that you're sitting at home, you can type in and actually search for what you're looking for. Because we, you know, we don't always know exactly what it is or what the title is of a book we're looking for. So we have to go through and describe those books and put in some key words. Put in the author, put in the date, so that patrons can come in and search for that book and have it in the system. And then there's also those impatient people that know the book is coming out two years in advance, and they want to know where going to get it. So we can order it in advance, get it in our system, so that you can go ahead and put a request on that book. And chances are, you'll be the first person to check that book out when we get it through our system and process. So that's a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that works with all of those materials, that you don't see, that's not there. And then I would say probably one of our easiest features that we just buy into through Selco. We work as a consortium so that we can actually afford e-materials. And each month, we have around four hundred and seven e-materials that get checked out. E-materials meaning ebooks that you get downloaded directly to your device for free, through your public library, with your public library card. So you can be sitting on your nice vacation in Australia maybe, and you just have to have a book. You go on the World Wide Web, type in Cannon Falls Library, type in the ebooks, or overdrive through Selco. You can sit right there on the beach, download a free ebook. At your convenience, wherever you want to. So, that's sort of a rough idea of what we do generally in our open hours. And then some. We don't stop with books. Remember, we're trying to enrich and enlighten people. And I remember in library school, we had this term called a library patron is a person we get from cradle to grave. So, early learners. We hear a lot in the news and stuff about early childhood education, early learning, early learning. Libraries are at the forefront of that. Each week, we offer three weekly children's programs. We've got a Monday program at ten fifteen. We've got a Tuesday program at ten fifteen. Two totally separate, different programs, different presentations. And then on Wednesday, we have what's called a lunch bunch. Kids are encouraged to come in, bring their lunch, sit down, and Ms. Gail reads stories to them. It gets them exposed to books at an early age. And we're talking toddlers. Some of them aren't even out of their child carriers. They're sitting there, but they're being exposed to reading, to what's going on in a story, and following along with it. Then we also offer a monthly movie. This gets a little complicated. It's not like just going down to Morris's store and renting a DVD and putting it in the player and pressing play. We've got to have public license. The public license that we have, we have to research and find out, well, what movies can we show legally to the public? And then we have to judge, well, who's our audience? Who's coming to these events? What kind of movies are they looking for? So a lot of research goes into that. We have a monthly book club. The book club sort of gets together. They choose a book, or staff chooses a book for them to read. They get together once a month, sit down, and discuss a book. Then we have additional programs throughout the year. These programs can vary. Thanks to city and county's generosity through the budget, we do have a small programming budget where we can hire performers. We also, through Selco and the legacy funding, I know y'all voted on in Minnesota several years before I came, we fill out the grants for that. And then in turn, once we do the program, we fill out the report for that, which is usually kind of intensive. And it goes to the state legislators, to let the legislators know what's going on with their legacy funding. Arts Challenge was sort of a new program for us this year. Got a lot of attention, got us a lot of neat artwork. So that's an additional program that will be continuing. It's at very little cost to us, but it's a really great opportunity for the community to engage and show off their skills. Because that's also one of the greatest assets of a library, are the patrons that come in and out, and the communities that they represent. We also do, probably one of our big events during the year is summer reading, which is when the library picks up and the schools have let out. Because you don't want the kids to get behind during the summer. You don't want them to sit around and goof off. So we do a program that encourages them, gives incentives for reading, coming in, doing more reading. Outside of the school year, it also gives them an opportunity to do recreational reading. Not a book that they're required to by classes. I was one of those students that if a teacher told me I had to read a book, chances are, I wasn't going to read it, just because I had to. I didn't want to. She or he told me to read it, didn't want to do it. I liked other books. So, you know, summer reading is a time for kids to shine and really get into and enjoy reading. And this program takes a lot of development. It usually centers around a theme, and it also comes with funding through Selco and all of that good stuff to present this. And it's really taxing on the staff to have lots of kids running through the library on a daily basis, but we enjoy it. We also enjoy when school starts back again. So that's sort of a glimpse at what we do. And at the end of the day, when we sit back and think, well, gosh, how do we do all of this? We have two full-time staff, myself included in that. Nine part-time assistants. Their hours and duties vary. They're all well-trained, lots of experience. They clearly know what they're doing. They know how to develop these programs. They know how to develop and develop a collection. They know how to keep a collection going and vibrant. Then we have our library board, which is our governing board, make sure we're doing our job and keeping up with our mission statement. We have the Library Foundation, which provides another aspect of funding for us, and I know you in the past provided quite a lot of work in getting a new library. We have city and county support. And we also have, our greatest assets are library patrons. They're the ones that keep the library going. They're the ones that keep the library vibrant and makes it a great community institution. So, that's my short in what we do is check out books. So, do y'all have any questions?
Yeah, Justin, people can also rental books that, CD books and that too. I mean, I know I did last winter, and when we were going someplace, and they're fantastic.
Absolutely. I didn't get too much into the collection, but we do offer audiobooks on CD, which are really great for traveling. Are you commuters out there? They're really good. We have regular books, clearly that's my fault, because we have DVDs, we have music CDs. And with a library card, you have access to multiple other audiobooks, CDs, DVDs, that may not be in our library, but they're in the greater Selco Region or greater Minnesota Region to access. So that library card carries a lot of weight in Minnesota.
That's good. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Yes, that was it.
Next is David, with the EDA.
Apparently, all the spectators ran down to the library. I'm going to have to hook this back up for me, Justin. I got to get back to this. I just have a single sheet, but... I was on the edge of my seat waiting for a Dewey Decimal update, but apparently... Do we still use that? Dewey Decimal System? Is that still?
Absolutely.
Nice. One of the nice things about the libraries, there's really a tangible product, which is the book that you just heard about that. In the economic development business, unless we're seeing a building going up, it's a little tough to see the results of our efforts. But what I wanted to say tonight is just to update the councilors and the public on what's going on in the economic development department, including the planning function. I end up handing both of those duties. And really, I like to say, it's really the business of "we," not "me," both in the economic development area as well as in planning. If the council was willing to give me all the money in the world, I could probably do all the economic development and not worry about anybody else. But that's not going to happen. It doesn't happen anywhere. So it really is the business of "we." And really, who are those "we" that I'm talking about? And I just want to go through some of the more significant groups that I work with and some of the projects that I've worked with each group on. Obviously, economic and development, economic development and planning all start with the city council. That's you five and the two that aren't joining you this evening. And with the support and the funding and the leadership and the regulatory function of the council, we can get things done in economic development. You take any one of those things away, and it gets really, really difficult to make progress in the areas of economic development and planning. So, I'd like to thank the council for all the support that you've given and the prior councils I've worked with, because we can't get it done without you, and it's really important. Public Works Commission, obviously made up of the council, but there's been a number of projects that I've worked on with the Public Works Commission that relate to economic development and planning. In summary, the Union Court project that we just went through this year with the lift station, that ended up falling into my department and was able to work with the twenty-one property owners, the Public Works Commission and the council, to get the lift station financed and a part of the municipal system. Also had a great deal of help with Tom and Greg here on that project. Three Hundred and Eighteenth Street, you may or may not remember that, but as a new hospital is getting built, all of a sudden, everybody realized that to take the new frontage road out to the hospital is a long ways around, and, boy, we got to figure out those roundabouts too. What about Three Hundred and Eighteenth Street, the gravel street? Shouldn't that be blacktopped and approved? That project fell back within my department, and we were able to work with council support to deal with the three property owners who were most affected by Three Hundred and Eighteenth Street. And were able to come up with a funding plan and a financing program to get that street paved to better serve the hospital. Another interesting project that the Public Works Commission helped me on most recently is the expansion of Interstate Lumber. A small piece of parkland that historically was misplaced with regards to the ownership tracks in that area. And we worked with the owner of Interstate, Public Works Commission, ultimately the city council, to sell a small piece of property that allowed Jeff Reinhardt to expand a building at Interstate Lumber. We were able to fix that problem, again, in economic development and planning program, but really took the support and the encouragement and the direction of the Public Works Commission to work through those agreements. Planning Commission, Jay's here tonight. Jay is the current representative of the council at the Planning Commission meetings. And year in and year out, for the last seven or so years that I've been working with the Planning Commission, we handle about ten to twelve permits a year. And those permits might be something as simple as a variance to build a garage closer to the property line than what the zoning ordinance allows. It might be a conditional use permit that allows someone to do something under the ordinance that isn't just permitted. It has to go through a process to be permitted. Ultimately, you on the council see those recommendations for conditional use permits. The Planning Commission also deals with the subdivision of lands, preliminary plats, final plats. Glenn Mulvihill's New Residential Development east of town. That was a plating process that came through the Planning Commission, as did the rezoning for that. So the Planning Commission plays a very important role, both in economic development and obviously planning. And they provide good, sound recommendations to the city council. And all but one, in the seven years that I've been here, every recommendation of the Planning Commission has been accepted by the council with the exception of one project, and that wasn't too long ago. We all remember that. So the commission does a great job, and I enjoy working with them to kind of process the applications as they come in. The Economic Development Authority, Morris, is a current council representative, along with Robbie, on the Economic Development Authority. with Robbie, on the Economic Development Authority. That's really a major role for myself, for the EDA, and a host of others, and you'll see, as I'll talk about some of these projects, the overlapping nature of all these groups with regards to economic development, Planning Commission, City Council, Public Works Commission, et cetera. And a couple of those projects include, first and foremost, the Cana River Winery Event Center. That's obviously a very significant development in this community. We worked as an EDA with the Maloney's to end up purchasing what used to be the former Lee Chevrolet property just to the west of the winery. We bought that back as an economic development authority from the Maloney's to help them finance the ultimate development and creation of the event center. So we're very integral party with the Maloney's, in this case, a private party, to put together a very significant project in this community. The OMC Access, Olmsted Medical Clinic, we all drive by that probably daily, and you look at a beautiful building that was built there by Dr. Carl, and we wonder and maybe take for granted, how was their access given off of Highway 20 into that?